Kickstart the budget workshop here and just a reminder to all councilors and folks in the audience that we are recording this for people at home to be able to watch these. I will go ahead and pass it off maybe to our town manager to kick us off. Thanks for the patience, everyone. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I'll just kind of do a quick overview. As you just received those books tonight, I'm not expecting a lot of questions. So I was hoping tonight we would do a kind of an overview of the whole budget and we would basically just give you the opportunity to kind of digest that, take some notes, and then we'll start from the top again in two weeks and then just go through questions you have in each section. And then hopefully we'll, I expect, we'll probably wrap up more likely in late April than early April. So it's going to probably take at least three, if not four, meetings. So what I will tell you is that this, the FY25 budget, I'm going to basically read off the notes I have in front of you, is still a work in progress. Right now, our expenses are up nearly 7% and revenues are up almost about the same. But that's a significant impact on the mill rates, about $460,000 over last year right now. I believe we're going to have to find somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 through this process, at least on the town side, and then hope that the school does the same. The preliminary number, as most of you know, the school came out last week with about a 7.8% increase or $1.8 million. The county's up about $100,000 over last year and our TIF districts grew by $340,000. So that all by itself is about 8.2%, or a little over $2 million. Right now, if we had to magically put the budget out to, you know, to, for taxation purposes, we would be looking about 82 cents on the mill rate from the school, 4 cents from the county, and almost 49 cents from the town, or about $1.35, which is not going to work. So I also want to kind of give you a clue that every $153,000 we find is about a 10 cent reduction in the mill rate. So I'm really trying to look for between revenues and expenses, trying to get that to around 25 cents or less, and that would be, you know, a significant cut. But we're going to have to look at, look at the whole budget and we're going to have to go for it piece by piece.
Bill, what was the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What would you say the dollar amount was that equaled 10 cents?
It's right on the second page of that memo I got in front of you, Mike. It's $153,549.
Thank you.
So keep that number in mind. Just round it off to 150,000 so you know we've got to find some serious cash. So it's not going to be an easy process. Initially, the department heads came with their budgets. We've already, we already knocked out six positions and over a million dollars in their requests in the round one with Chris, myself, and Katie. And that, that happened over the last three weeks. I'll give you a clue what we did for salary adjustments. All three union contracts now are being renegotiated. We hope to have those done by the end of April. So anything I give you right now is just preliminary and I'll, we'll be updating those. But more than half of our workers are represented by bargaining units. We basically have estimated about a 5% wage adjustment and that has to do with benchmarking against the communities we always have benchmarked against, Freeport, Yarmouth, Falmouth, and Cape Elizabeth. We always have strived to be at the average or slightly above it and that's, that's, wouldn't be any different this year. I believe that we'll be close. Katie and I met with our workers' comp insurer last week. We believe we can get some savings there as well with some additional work to do on our end and that's definitely doable. Our workers' comp insurance premiums have gone up significantly. We're, we're well over 100% now. We used to be, I think it's 77% of what the average was and I think we're about double that now. We had some pretty significant losses over the year. We also found out that workers' comp also has adjusted the way they do and, well, the way they basically assess us. And some of those things I didn't realize related to things like PTSD and other things that they now include in workers' comp insurance, which was, was news to me. But I believe it's not just the injuries that we faced, it's also the workforce, the type of work we do, and some of the things they are now including in their premium schedule. So just as an intro again, Katie's going to walk us through each department. I'll put them up on the screen there, but what she'll do is just kind of give you an overview of the changes in each department and we'll go through this. And then I would think that tonight, if we have time, we could go through basically the changes to the revenue budget, which would be in your books, and we'll bring that up as well. That wasn't as significant. The big change in revenues because of the major value increase we saw, we're going to see a decrease in our revenue sharing this coming year too, about $200,000. And that was an unsuspected hit that I didn't see coming.
Do we know why that happened?
We're trying to find that out now. John is talking to the main revenue service and just basically, is it formula-based or is it, is it something else? And it's got to be formula-based because it's never happened like that before where we've seen such a drop in one year. So hopefully it's, maybe it's a miscalculation. That would be very nice, but I, I don't think we're going to be that lucky. So if you're okay, Mark, we'll start with just an overview and then if we get through that, what I would propose is we jump to revenues and that's a little easier to explain.
Yep, that sounds great.
Turn it to Katie.
Thank you.
Hello. So we're going to, do you just want to start going through admin? Okay, start right down there. So one of the larger increases is in the retirement. A lot of people with new hires, they've gone on to main PERS, which is a higher contribution on our end. So that's reflected in the, in that line item. Also kind of a restructuring of the, in the, up the wages, right there. And we've also included a line that was not budgeted in here before for range services, which you guys are familiar with, with Angela. That was not a budgeted item before and now we have it in there under contracted services, 135, 5,000, 25,000 of that there and 25,000 under TIF as well. Anything else? Yes, Bob?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
A lot of new hires. I would think that at some level, new hires would reflect a lower cost. If people retire, leave at the top of the game, new hires come in and there's a differential.
The new hires have selected, elected to take main PERS instead of ICMA or just no retirement at all. So that's been a change. Some people didn't have the, also health benefits changed as some of the hires that were there before elected not to have health insurance through here and some are now, the new hires are now having their health insurance through us. So, good. All right, Assessor. No changes in that other than the COLA and just basic market rate adjustments. You can see that's just a 1.9% increase even with a COLA increase of 5%. Town clerk, same thing with the health insurance, was it 39%? ICMA, you'll see the switch there again is in the retirement, what people are electing to take on. Any questions?
Yeah, I just had a-
What do you do, Clark?
Yeah.
I just had a question about the, which I'm fine doing it either way, but I know in the past there were like these red, the red lettering underneath that kind of summarized some of the big takeaway. Oh, that's on a different.
I'm sorry, I should have told you guys.
Got it.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they used to be baked into the document, but that makes sense. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Technology. This is for the part-time wages is the camera operators that are actually doing this meeting right now. Just to, that's not a wage that we actually, that's for those. And then there's an increase in the contracted services with Ion Networking, who handles all of our IT. We're also looking at having them for an extra day next year to be helpful with continuity and helpful in getting projects done because they're only there twice now and so we kind of miss out on getting things done in a more efficient way. So we're looking at that. Elections, I think that's just fine, but not really anything there.
Is that, Katie, can I ask, is that $89,000 expense under license? Is that part of the Ion stuff or is that different?
That's all the, yeah, they can, they, as a contract services, they control, they monitor our licenses with like Adobe and all the other things. So that's under that line.
Okay, so we're effectively talking 300,000 between those two, right? So the 89,000 plus the 207?
Yep.
Okay.
Was the, I know we had talked about the vote now thing. Would that fall under here or under communications as a line item?
More like the other communications.
Okay. Yeah, that also, that line also includes our Munis software, our vision software, all the softwares and the 89,000.
Okay, got it.
Munis is just upgrading to a new one.
Probably a big portion of that, yeah.
Yeah. We're also transitioning the Trio, off a Trio for the motor vehicle and just usually Munis for everything. So. Elections, no real changes here, just the warranty cost, I guess. Yeah. Can't really help those costs.
Bill, are you guys still happy with Munis? Because I, every place I travel around the state, they're bitching about it.
It's really the only game in town, Mike.
Yeah.
It's, you have a choice between Trio and Munis and everything else is really Excel spreadsheets. So Munis does a good job. Their issue is really customer service sometimes. We've been fortunate. We've basically caught their attention when we did our upgrade. Katie has worked with them in the past pretty well and they've been in our office. They're going to come in and do more training for our staff. That's been the big downfall, training. You know, it is, it is not a user-friendly type program. You really need, you really need to use it every day to not forget. It's a lot of real keys.
I had a guy hunting up this, this fall, we're driving by and he's complaining. He's a sheriff in the county right next to Houston. And he goes, "I'm dealing with this Tyler technology and this Munis." I go, "Well, yeah, they're right there." And he says, "Can we stop in? I got something for them." But, yeah, all right. I'm sorry to sidetrack us.
No, it's not long.
So the town planner that we currently have will be retiring and that position will become a, she's currently considered part-time, basically. So that will become a full-time position and also it would be a planner economic development position. So that's reflected in this as well. So that affects all our retirement wages and health insurance and all that. Do you have a question?
Yeah, Chris is going to be taking over Carl's duties in senior housing. He's going to be taking over what-
He volunteered.
He volunteered. And he didn't even say 98. So just find him on that.
Do you mean the, in terms of the housing authority?
Yeah, he does probably 75% of it now on the capital side. The guy basically reports to him all the upgrades, all the capital projects run through him now. He will be, he and Laurel will be taking over, it'll be some of the letters. You know, we don't have a lot of issues, but Christina does most of the day-to-day work at the counter. Most people pay there, rent to her and deal with her for the day-to-day stuff. So Chris will be dealing more with projects and oversight and dealing with the housing part as well.
So does that wages line include part of Chris's salary then?
This does not. It doesn't.
Because 29% increase?
Well, you know.
23.
If you go through your book, you'll see where Carl was before. And I think it may be the additional person we have working right now on the kitchens. Because we've got to go through all the units and replace the kitchens and we have one staff person dedicated to that. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, wait. You want the COVID is up there?
No, we pulled it. Pulled it out of Cedar Housing.
Can some of the economic develop, economic development director salary be paid out of, by TIF or is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Bill, I, I shouldn't know this, but what is the COVID up there for?
Another thing with Munis, it's all it's off the books until it's at least three or four years out. It stays there. So you can't lose it.
We need to maintain the history. We can't eliminate the history because you can see in FY23, there was cost to that line, that COVID line in full-time wages. So we can't lose that history.
Okay.
Yeah, once, once we get out of that, once you go to zero, it's, it'll be next year, that will go away. 20, it will go away and it'll be replaced by 24. So we'll lose that.
So I think we got state assistance when someone's auditing it. They like to have to be able to filter it out based on that.
Okay.
Legal, we kept the same.
The only, the increase here is with the contracted services for county dispatch and Cameron tasing. Other than that, everything's pretty much in line with general increases. What are you looking at? Is Chris in the way?
No. The chief will be at your next budget meeting, as will the fire chief. One of the odd things in the police budget, and it's very strange, is that over the last four years, we have been at least one person down and not two people down. And first time we've ever come across where we've had multiple quality applicants for the position. He would like to budget an extra position in, in preparation for losing somebody else because the last four years, he has been consistently down people and it's basically impacted his overtime in a negative way. A few of those years, those folks were on workers' comp, so we had to continue to carry their salary and one was challenged and we eventually won, but it was after the budget was closed out. So it was basically that, those wages we still carried through the regular budget, but eventually were reimbursed through basically miscellaneous revenue the following budget year. But we'll talk a little bit more about that. The fire chief also, he had four positions in this year's budget that were cut in the first round. Those were for paramedics to basically get to a full crew similar to what Falmouth staffs now on a day shift in one department. Bob and I are trying to meet with the town manager in Falmouth and a counselor that has some interest in collaboration with our fire department. I'm not sure how far it'll go this time, but what I would hope is maybe we can get to that, maybe a mutual aid on steroids position versus just regular will come if you come type of thing. Maybe there's a way to share with some employees to basically take some of the stress off of our, our folks because, as you guys know, we lost several paramedics during COVID and it was very, very difficult on the remaining six. They worked a lot of overtime. So we're going to explore what opportunities might there be with Falmouth, if we could kind of work a little bit more closely with them to either share in a pool of employees or share in a pool of per diems perhaps that might fill in when, you know, we get strained or people are out for illness or vacation. Because honestly, most of these, these folks have worked a lot of overtime the last few years and it's to a point where it gets to be too much. So we've got to think about that.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
I'm going to show my age here. Is there any such thing anymore, Mike, as reserve officers?
Very few departments have them anymore. But nobody, I, Falmouth has a few, believe it or not. I think they've got three or four. Yarmouth has a couple, but it's full-time guys that retired the state on.
So that would be my preference, maybe looking for some kind of saving measures, but still making sure that we're covered.
Trying to deputize, Mike. You want to deputize, Mike?
How about you, Ronnie?
No.
Well, this is more, this is more on the fire department piece of it. The police, both, both are unionized too. So when there's an overtime shift available, they're still go to the union first and then, you know, after that it becomes what we do, rotation through the call company and then, then we go to per diems and then we go to our current staff. So our deputy chief, as you know, is a paramedic and he has been filling a lot of shifts. So that, that is very difficult and we also got to be careful that it doesn't kind of get out of control. So we'll be talking more about that.
Okay.
I think, I think surely the biggest challenge we'll have is what can we get with two bargaining units that, I believe Falmouth is just in the process of forming a bargaining unit. So I don't know if they're doing Teamsters or if they're doing the National Fire Group, but whatever they land at, it will be, you know, we'll have to try to work that, those two groups together. Police are both represented right now by MAP, so I think it'll be a little easier, but we'll see. I don't, I don't, I'm not thinking it's going to get answered this budget cycle, but at least we can have a conversation.
Now, it's just kind of an old-fashioned question. I remember when we had reserve officers, so.
Can I, can I ask a question about each of these sheets? And it's not related solely to police or fire or anything like that, but I'm trying to figure out where we have flexibility. Because cutting an inanimate object out of the budget's a lot easier than an individual because of salaries and just people's lives at risk. I'm trying to figure out where on these lists, if you go back to the police, if you don't mind, trying to figure out where on these lists, there's like the, the above number and the below. It looks like shared expenses, like right under that M-PERS. Like, everything above that is kind of an above the line, the way I'm looking at this. Is that right?
Yeah.
That's related to an employee being here.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's something that's fixed. If that person is here, every cost looking up there is fixed, right? Because can, I mean, am I wrong? Can we tweak any of those?
We're right.
Okay. So it almost strikes me as like we need a line also below, right, right there in the middle of these to then say, hey, anything you want to tweak. There's like an above the line, which is really letting someone go, or there's a below the line, which is where can we pinch and save and tweak? And I realize that, that's not going to be where the big savings probably are, but I just thought that would be helpful for when we're looking at each of these sheets.
Yeah. When we divide our budget into wages and benefits and to different categories, it's pretty clear that the number is somewhere around 200,000. That are kind of the flexible areas that if you cut this, you know, we can't cut debt, we can't cut really contracted services, dispatch and other things like that. We also have service agreements and those type of things. But then, then the pile gets pretty small and we'd be happy to kind of highlight that. And as we go through the budgets next time, we'll basically pull those out for you and say, okay, these are the areas that we could look at. But everything is kind of connected. I mean, you cut a person, you cut uniforms, you cut this, you cut that, you cut dues, you cut a lot of things. So cut training. I mean, it goes right across the board with most of these departments. But, no, I hear what you're saying and we can look at that as well. And we're pretty, pretty much right on target that shared employees in this budget, police, those are the two SRO officers that are, that are shown here. I'll say two, it's one and a half. We have a part-time SRO and a full-time SRO. Those are compensated by the SAD. That's just a strict reimbursement.
Okay.
Bill, what's a, what's a paramedic cost, nuts to bolts, everything included with no overtime? 80?
More than probably closer to, probably closer to 100.
Okay.
Yep.
Safety equipment, is that the, where the camera and the tasers come in or is it a different line item?
That would be a different line item. Most likely would be under contracted services, that big 260 number.
Oh.
Right, because that's, is it, it's a subscription service.
Subscription over five years.
Where they store all the data in the cloud and all the video.
Oh, got it. I didn't realize that. Got it, got it, got it. Sorry, I didn't realize it was connected to that. I just thought it was.
And again, we'll, we'll come back to all of these because tonight is really just to kind of give you a, just a, an overview. And next time we'll go through and we'll start right from the beginning and go through and clean up the sheets a little bit so you can see, see it more clearly. But the police budget is, is only at the small percentage.
Yep.
So we'll move on to the fire, which is up about 8.2%.
Hope that the seat gets hot. So this is, in the years past, these, some of these lines, including overtime and per diems, have gone over budget every year. So this is just now reflecting what's actually being spent. So you kind of see a large increase, but it's actually what's been, been spent in the years past. So it's just reflecting that.
And we're hopeful that with a full staff now that we'll maybe be able to reduce overtime a little bit, but so far it's been difficult. Every time we think we're at full staff, somebody gets hurt or somebody's sick or somebody's on vacation, so.
So can we just back up real quick on the fire? Why we saw a larger increase there than we did maybe in police? Was it because of adding a new person? 8.2% increase overall, right?
Percentage changes.
The per diem, is that it? Oh, 8.2.
I know, but there's someone showing here because this is a personal change.
The per diem and overtime weren't properly, were budgeted to actual expenses in years past. So it's a larger increase now.
It's going to be 20. So it's going to be the same amount in 25.
Make sure you're not going off the actual. That, that year to date, that, that's what we spent year to date. If it's 2024 actual, that's just what we spent year to date.
Okay, all right. That makes sense.
Yeah.
That'll scare you if you spend.
Yes, I was, I was getting ready to.
So it's really off this third column, 2024 revised budget to, to the 2025.
Right.
That's the delta.
That makes a lot more sense.
But Katie, to your point, is the, is the biggest reason for the increase in, that's what I'm trying to figure out. It's like, what's the, the factor here? Is it, it looks like it's the line of per diem. Is that right?
Right. And like I said, that has gone over every year for budgeting. So when you're comparing what we're budgeting now to what we budgeted in the past, it's going to show a larger increase even though we've, in the end, we actually spent over budget.
Right.
I think what you're getting at, Mark, is the actuals for-
Yeah, if you look at the actuals for those lines, they're actually more than what they continually budgeted for.
Made in its AGS.
Right. So in 2024, we, we budgeted $25,000 for per diem expenses.
And we've already spent 30.
Correct.
So that's, this is trying to reflect that, don't budget again for 25 because you're going to go above 25.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sounds, yeah.
What special details?
Well, it's a good catch, Rob. I think Katie and I have been going back and forth on this and I'm, I'm a little concerned the way they're posted right now. So we have it showing as $1 here.
It's going to show on the revenues line.
Right. But I reduced the revenue line by almost $100 to take it out. I'm going to, I'm going to-
No, it's going to, it's going to be a dollar on the revenues lines as well. It's going to be a negative dollar. So, because it's something we charge out. So we, you go out as a police officer and you do a, a special detail. We pay for it initially. We pay for it initially, but then we bill it out and so we get that money right back. So, it's in and out. So, it's just reflected as a dollar here.
Place holder.
And then a, a credit dollar in the revenues, so.
So, we, we bought a million-dollar fire truck. Where does that bond show up? It's not in their, it's not, not in their budget.
And can you just remind me one, just because I've forgotten, the per diem expense, that, that is for what?
Per diem people.
Additional assistance when we need it.
Yeah.
Got it, that's exactly what I was thinking, okay.
From out of our agency that are kind of freelancing.
That's what I thought, okay. Okay.
Reserve.
What's that, reserve?
Reserve.
Oh, there we go.
Right, Shirley.
Okay, thank you for going over that again. Appreciate that.
I said reserve paramedics, per diem.
I can't hear.
Reserve paramedics per diem, so.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to explain the, the vehicle situation you want to do here? Because that's...
Code enforcement, code enforcement officer has been up to, where is it? Looking for his $5,625 in vehicle allowance. That's what the stipend was for. And he has requested that we basically get rid of that and go to a town-issued vehicle that would be here when he got here and he would use it on the job. So, we're looking at basically pickup trucks that could be either dispatched through public works and basically put into our fleet rotation, so that's where he would basically, that, so that stipend would go to zero and then we would add something for gasoline and for equipment maintenance just to kind of offset it.
So, do we have any old cruises, Bill, that we could swap? I'm sure you looked into.
Well, we're, we are looking at that right now, Mike. We're looking at, because they're all four-wheel drive, the Explorers are four-wheel drive, but, you know, so are the pickup trucks. So, we're just trying to see what's the best fit and will be the best fit for him. Because honestly, it's, I think it's better with a Townmark vehicle to be out on a site too. So, I don't, I wasn't opposed to that and it does save us some, nets us out some money as well.
Electric car.
Are we looking at electric?
Is there any reason we, I mean?
No, those, those are so, such low wheel bases, they're so low to the ground. The sites that Bill goes on are all under construction and, you know, it just, that wouldn't last very long, so.
Costs more to have me tow it.
Yeah.
Need a cop motor special.
Yeah.
Keep your eye out, Ron, at the auctions.
I have an old fire truck in the front line, so.
Yeah, is there, the 23% increase in part-time wages?
That, that, that almost in some ways is in and out. That is our electrical inspector. Basically, he's almost paid an equal amount in our, offset by electrical inspections. We're just anticipating more inspections next year. He's, he's played a, paid a flat wage for that, so that's really what that is. And you could see the last few years, they've kind of been bouncing all over the place, so. And it's been fairly busy years in, in electrical inspection so far as well, so.
When people put in chargers for electric cars, do those have to be inspected by the electrical inspector?
They do.
Okay.
They do.
Heat pumps.
Heat pumps, every, everything under the sun, solar, everything heat, there's all the electrical inspections for those as well.
Did you see in the news last week that we're not going to have enough power for the US?
Hydrogen's coming, so hang on. The next, the next best thing.
Gasoline, gasoline's coming back.
Harbor Master, really, our increase here is in contracted services. Every three years, we've got to do some mark, changes in the buoys and marker systems. That's going to happen this spring, I believe. So, that's why we have a, a larger increase. And I think we had a slight increase in the storage over on Chabique Island with the floats.
That's a good question. So, you want to ask that question? Yeah, Bailey just asked a question that I guess got passed me too. If all budgets reflect a 5% COLA, how come we're seeing different numbers in those adjustments? Like, we're seeing like 6.1% instead of 5% for some. Is it, you know, like, for example, on the assessors page, I can see there's a 5%, but like on administration, there's a 6.1% increase in full-time wages?
Different employees, different categories, change in employment, different adjustments for jobs. If it's like the assessors is one, one person, there wasn't any additional, additional adjustment to any of those salaries. Administration is probably five or six people.
So, in other words, this is a 5% COLA plus depending on position.
Where the person lands that we hire, you know. Typically, we've got a new person coming in finance that was, that we've been trying to get for six or seven months. Remember last fall, our entire finance department was wiped out, so we've been still rebuilding, so.
So, it's an, it's effectively like a new employee coming in or somebody?
Same. We had three employees. We still will have three employees, but three more experienced employees than we had originally.
So, the wages aren't like a straight 5%, you're not going to see that because over the course of time, people change, their salary amounts change. If they got a, a increase in pay, when that was budgeted, it, it was budgeted before that increase. So, last year's budget wouldn't reflect, this year's budget wouldn't reflect that change over the course of the 12 months. So, it's not just a straight-up.
5%.
5% like that, you know, that would be, that would be beautiful, but so many other things go into that is, where are they at now? Where are they going to be if there's step increases with COLAs and things like that? So, the step increases with the COLA. So, they're just reflecting that and when you have a change in, in, in the hire, they might have go lower or higher than who was there before. So, it's not, it's not a perfect picture of 5%.
So, do we have step increases for non-contracted staff?
No.
Okay.
Just, just bargaining units.
Yep.
Sorry, it took us off. I think we were at Harbor Master.
Yep.
Katie, what's the percentage on FICA?
7.65.
So, this budget will be changed in your books next week. This one, it missed the, we didn't pick up the shared employee with North Yarmouth and with Yarmouth. So, this will be around 41,000 for 2025. You see, it says 103. That doesn't include the reimbursement we get from North Yarmouth and Yarmouth for the animal control officer. That's a shared position with those two towns. And typically, we have netted out their two contributions. That's why you see these two numbers here, 34 and 55. This one's, I think, around 42,000 is my recollection.
Who is our animal control now, Bill?
Mike Dark. Brand new, never done it before, he's going through training. Chief hired him a couple of weeks ago. He was on board last week and is doing the course right now and will be up and ready hopefully in a week.
Beautiful. Is that considered a full-time job?
Well, with three towns it is, Bob.
There's three towns.
Yeah. Yarmouth, not Yarmouth, but North Yarmouth and, yeah, Yarmouth, the three towns, yep, yep.
We provide a vehicle?
The vehicle is, yeah, shared and there's a cost sharing with the three towns as well toward the capital in, in that program.
Is there any like, like, this is a very off-the-cuff question, but when someone calls animal control, are there, and something happens, is there a fi, any fines put in place or like, you know, when you get a bill after you get an ambulance ride, you have to pay? Is there any type of like, like back and forth financing exchanged that way? No?
No, we don't, we don't collect any fines or fees. The only fines we collect are typically late dog registration fees that come in after people have been given a notice in December and then they show up in March to register their dogs and there's usually a late fee for that, but that's about the only thing that we do with animal control.
So, when someone has to go to court for their barking dog and has to pay $50 or has to pay $50 to not go to court, the courts keep the money or?
We don't get the money.
That's not, who gets the money?
Just like a speed.
Not us, it's not.
Because we issue the summons.
We don't, we don't collect on those. We, I can answer that question. I'll, I'll get you an answer, though.
There isn't any fines that go back to municipality. Speeding tickets, dog, all this stuff goes to court.
Okay.
Goes to general fund.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering like, is there a way to make it stop staining?
Parking tickets come to us, right?
Parking tickets come to us.
That's why I paid mine one time when I got one at the high school.
Parking tickets and dog, late dog registrations are about the only type of fines that we get, so. So, that will be corrected.
$10. I wasn't not going to pay it.
Sorry, I know that was awkward.
So, waste disposal is down, but down for only one year. Next year, it's going to be much more expensive, probably about 100,000 more. This is primarily due to our new contract with Casella and that won't be implemented until spring of '25. So, 2025 is when you'll see the carts come into place.
Three pages, yeah.
The contract started in July. Chris negotiated that. We saved over a million dollars by changing over a five-year contract and it will be fully automated. We're expecting spring.
I don't have that in my packet.
Yeah, you do.
We skipped public works.
Oh, sorry.
Keep going.
Well.
Did we skip public, yeah, we skipped public work.
We gotta go back to it.
Okay.
While we're going backwards, can you just help me understand on the Harbor Master, sorry to get everybody really off track, why there was such a large increase on the contracted services from 14,400 to 18,500? It's not a huge difference, but every...
Some, some of that has to do with resetting the channel markers every three years. It's a one-time, one-time cost.
Okay.
And some of that, I believe, is in the storage of the floats on Chabique Island. All those floats are dragged out to Chabique Island by, by our contractor and stored on Chabique.
I was not. I was talking to Bailey about something else, I think.
Bill, why don't they store them on our land?
We don't, don't have any room down there and trying to get it up over the embankment. Last time, we had, we picked the house up and put it up, you know, where the porta potty is inside that little building. That was, I think, eight grand to bring that crane in, to pick it off the flats and put it up there. So, we basically said float away.
Okay.
And they do. They do a good job. They do. It's custom float out of Portland that does it for us.
Okay, sorry about that.
I think you add, you kind of went into this and I didn't hear it, part-time wages for waste, waste?
Solid waste you're talking about now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or wait, sorry.
Were we going to do public works before we get to that?
Okay, we can do public works, very small increase in public works. Primarily some wage adjustments. The success of Valhalla also over the years have shifted some of the costs back over to the golf course. Mild winters now are, we're not plowing as much, so Chris basically balanced the time between the golf course and, and public works probably a little bit more fairly going forward. And really, you know, trying to think back here.
They're union, correct, Bill?
They are. They are.
Are you still using the molasses that like, yeah, how's that, how did that work?
It's mild winter.
Yeah.
Keeps the roads pretty clear and comical.
So, if it were to be a more intense winter and we're not mild next year and we get nailed, just out of curiosity, like, it's, is it, is it designed for a more intense winter or is it designed for a milder?
No, it, it's really designed to keep the salt on the road.
Yeah.
And if we have a open winter like we did this year, we're going to see less in overtime and less in salt.
Got it.
So.
The state's been using it for a while now, in the interstate. And it, it actually works as a binder, like Bill says, it kind of holds the salt in place. And the reason I know is underneath the truck pulling the drive shaft towing it, the stuff's dripping on me and it tastes like molasses.
Oh, wow.
Salty molasses.
I mean, I'm being very serious.
Oh, Ron.
And I, when I got out from underneath the truck, I was brown, so.
Yeah.
That's wild.
Yeah, but they've been using it for two or three years and it does work, I mean.
Well, they'd say technically that it helps with the bounce. If you look at a, if you watch the salt come off the spinner, it tends to bounce and a lot of it bounces off the road.
Oh, cool.
That spray basically almost, it's like a tackifier, it basically almost tacks it out, doesn't let it bounce as much, so.
Is it more expensive than what we used to be? Just curious.
We use, it's probably not more expensive, but we're using less salt. So, the extra cost in molasses and the sprayer and the equipment is, is basically replacing the cost of that salt that we were wasting.
Cool.
But better for the environment, for sure.
Totally.
Yep.
Also melts the salt at a low temperature.
Well, that's true, very true.
We can actually multiply below zero. Before it was only like, what?
20, 20 degrees is the most effect, 20 degrees and rising used to be the best time to apply salts. When it's below 20 degrees, it really has a hard time struggling. It says, people would say that you could melt 20 pounds of ice at 20 degrees with one pound of salt. When it gets to one degrees, it takes 20 pounds of salt to melt one pound of ice. So, you really want to be careful when the temperatures drop too low and like Chris said, it helps lower that freezing, that helps the effectiveness of that salt as well at lower temps. A lot of towns will use calcium chloride. Calcium chloride is great, as is magnesium chloride, but calcium is the most destructive thing for equipment that you can imagine. It's just so corrosive. It starts eating away at the frames of the plow truck and probably takes at least a year, if not two years, of its life out. The frames start rotting and you have to do more repairs and it's, it's a little, it's a little scary when you're, when you're trying to put bodies up in the air and you worry about how strong that steel is that's supporting that. So, we stayed away from calcium chloride and I think this has been a really good experiment and I think we'll continue to go with it, so.
Molasses.
He's going to have this year, half salt.
It's not over yet.
Yeah, don't drink sus, anybody. It snowed a lot on Easter, so.
Electricity, you have zero in actuals and 11.9 in projection.
And M-Pers too.
Again, it's a transfer at the end of the year because of the solar farm, everything goes out.
That's what I was getting at, okay, all right.
Yeah. Bob and I are looking at working with Revision Energy as well to see if we, see how our electrical costs to date are keeping up with the amount we're producing on the field. Because if you walk out there, I mean, there's plenty of room for additional solar panels and if we're, you know, 10 or 50 panels off from where we should be, may not be a bad time to add them and, you know, maybe fund them the way we did before because we're only a couple of years away from owning that solar field and then our electrical costs will be a wash. That's almost 100,000 in electricity every year. So, it's really, really, it's been a really good job to do that. So, you'll see that electra, electricity thing consistent in every budget. It's kind of an end-of-year transfer we do. Okay, back to you.
Don't have to. Are we done with public works? We suppose we'll be done, really?
Waste more and solid waste for, for right now.
Can we just talk about the wages real quick?
Yep. Part-time wages, it's all at overtime rate since it's all public works operators. We haven't been successful in really keeping a part-time employee. So, it's, after a while, we just basically budgeted the, the, the weekend work with part-time employees, with public works employees, I'm sorry. We also extended the hours. Two years ago, if you remember, the council extended the hours during the week. They wanted more hours that the facility was open and it's a busier place.
Do you?
Bill, not to go too deep into it, but everybody around us has a transfer station. What are your thoughts?
Well, I used to run a transfer station for 13 years. Well, I used to run a transfer station for thirteen years in Yarmouth and, uh, built it and, uh, uh, I, I, it, it's a social thing. I, I really believe it's a really cool social thing.
Greatest time in the world.
It's an awesome place to meet your neighbors and do stuff, but, um, I think you're gonna get it under pressure to look at that in the future, but it's much more expensive. Uh, you're gonna spend an, at least a half a million, if not three-quarter of a million dollars more in costs. Uh, because when you add a, uh, transfer station in, you're giving residents the opportunity to bring their trash, throw it in a compactor, you've gotta haul that, uh, haul those, uh, containers to EcoMain, dump them there. And, you know, you're basically staffing a new facility. You're gonna add one or, one to two employees, at least one and a half. And it's a, it's a nice to have. I think I would tell you that it, it will get expen- more expensive because people will want more services like, uh, a place to drop off metal, a place to drop off couches, a place to drop off demolition waste. Uh, we ran that type of facility in Yarmouth as well and, uh, it, it worked out great, uh, for the town, but they, they didn't pay for, uh, trash. They basically told the residents that if you wanted to dispose of your trash, you had to come to the transfer station. We didn't pay for, uh, Casella to pick it up at your curbside. And, uh, they didn't pay for the tipping fee to EcoMain unless it came to the transfer station, so it was kind of a trade-off. Here, we've gone doors, uh, curbside for, gosh, must be close to, now, it's been all twenty-one of my years and I think it was probably close to, well, since we've lived here thirty-two years now, we've had curbside pickup for thirty-two years, so it was well before that, probably thirty-five years anyway. I think that was the choice that, uh, when, when they were done at, uh, the landfill, they basically went in the nineties, probably right to curbside collection. Cause that's when the landfill was closed, uh,
Right.
the, the dump, early, early nineties.
So this may be getting to what he's talking about here, the EcoMain line? Is that what he's referring to, right?
No, he was talking about a whole different, uh, a whole different operation that would have to be put together. Their budget is probably half, if not double, of what our budget is for, uh, running a transfer station.
That's what I was looking for, Mark.
Yep.
Would it be cheaper if, if we did it ourselves? And the, the quick answer was no.
Gotcha, but I, but I am curious as to why the, I mean, it looks like we've only, our actual so far this year for EcoMain expenses is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, but we're projecting a hundred and eighty-six thousand, but then we're gonna go ahead and re-budget almost thirty thousand more or twenty thousand more?
Well, E- EcoMain went up in cost on recycling as well, uh, ten percent in, uh, solid waste and, uh, I think another five percent in recycling for next year. What were the numbers, Chris? Do you have them right there?
On, on the tipping fee for the regular waste, it might come eighty-seven fifty to ninety-seven fifty. And for recyclables, it might come forty-five dollars to sixty-five dollars.
Okay.
It's, it's all listed on there.
Yep, in the bigger binder, okay.
And they're in the process of building a brand-new recycling facility in that, uh, building at the end of Blueberry Cove. Uh, Blueberry Road, if you ever drive by there and you see the big, some Oakzack, there's this big, big blue building, it's about fifty thousand square feet. Uh, they purchased that and they're gonna be basically putting, um, a brand-new recycling facility in there, which, uh, they are out now trying to almost double their, uh, recycling, uh, input because they have enough capacity.
Can they get rid of it?
Yeah, yeah, we are. We're back to it. It's, it's not making a ton of money, but it's saving us from, uh, landfill space for sure.
Grab a sandwich.
Can I, oh, sorry, L. Phil monitoring, I'm assuming that's landfill monitoring? On waste disposal? Is that what that is?
That is correct.
Alright, what is that?
Uh, monitors we have around the landfill and around the, uh, stump dump facility, uh, that we closed out just a few years ago.
Cameras?
No. They actually measure the groundwater.
Okay.
Uh, they go in and measure the meth, any methane gas that's being vented from there.
Yeah.
As well as, uh, the groundwater composition and what's happening. We're hopeful that in the next few years, that'll be discontinued.
Okay.
Uh, I think we would've had it discontinued had we not dealt with, uh, um, some of the methane issues we had when we were closing the facility when we found that a neighbor's, uh, uh, drain pipe was buried in the landfill.
Yeah.
And once we opened that up and got that fixed, the problems went away, but we're stuck for probably at least three more years with monitoring.
Okay.
And that's not a bad thing to measure the methane base.
No, I think that's good. I, I don't know, I just better say I'm sorry.
Those, those landfills are, are, some are very different. Uh, when this landfill, the actual municipal landfill was closed, it had enough methane gas to pretty much power the whole town garage if we wanted to capture it.
That's crazy.
But, uh, we, we didn't do it. But Valmath had about a quarter of its town, it could've basically powered, uh, and if it recaptured the methane that was produced from their landfill, so. It's, uh, it's pretty impressive and, but it's also fairly explosive if you're not careful and you don't monitor it, so.
Yeah, okay.
Are we gonna see some revenue on, uh, the fresh dump for compost, you know?
We're in the process of grinding it and when we grind it, we incur a cost for grinding it, so right now we charge contractors about ten dollars a yard.
Cause we were at one point like mixing it with like horse manure, right, and then?
We do that all along, man.
Okay.
We're just, uh, we used to grind it ourselves in small amounts, but really other residents, but we're actually grinding it with a commercial grinder at a cost.
Did you say ten dollars a yard?
Sell it for twenty-five dollars a yard.
To contractors. Ten dollars.
Ten dollars a yard?
To contractors, not to the public.
You're charging it?
Right.
Oh, I thought you said you were, we were paying ten dollars a yard to grind it.
No, we actually, we, we mix the leaves and the, and the grass with manure.
Right.
And then contractors will take it from there because we'll get rid of it because we're running out of space. Now we're looking at grinding it to make a better product. We can sell it for more money and not lose it.
But we had sold some by like the tractor trailer size, right?
Yep.
To like Jolly Rancher or Jolly Farmer, whatever the jolly guy is.
But it was just raw leaves, grass and horse manure we didn't touch. We just mixed it and we sent it right there. We didn't grind it.
Okay.
Okay, now to the recreation center. Uh, that, uh, used to be the banquet center, uh, was formerly, uh, run by Main State Golf Association. We had rentals and stuff out of there and now we have pretty much turned it into our senior center during the day and, uh, also be using it for, uh, selected golf tournaments that are large in size. So we're anticipating, um, some operational costs there, uh, and those are reflected here in this budget. Uh, we're still kind of in the new stages. We really haven't, we kind of only dipped our toes into the water on rentals. We're really not looking to, uh, make it a wedding venue only because of the wear and tear on the facility. Uh, we're trying to keep it, uh, keep it really kind of small and local, if you will. Only because it's, um, it's difficult, uh, when you basically, I'll say, commercialize the space and you're, you know, doing two or three weddings a weekend. It's, we have found it has not paid for itself just in the wear and tear, so we're just trying to keep it as a rec center, as that alternative place, meeting space and, uh, for, uh, town events again. Uh, the Valhalla Golf Course, uh, again, uh, is heading for another very good year. Uh, we will, uh, more than break even again. Uh, we're expecting somewhere around fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar on the plus side in revenues when we end this season. Uh, we're, we're basically wrapping up some, uh, construction work we have down there, uh, with paving and drainage work around the facility. Uh, that is being funded through the revenues from the golf course. We're anticipating another good year. We're going into, you know, record memberships and record participation in many of the leagues and activities. Uh, this winter, we had, uh, gosh, over seven hundred people there for the Winter Fest event that the rec department hosted. We hope to do that on a regular basis going forward and if we got more snow, we try to do it a little bit more, but it was a little dicey that day, but the ice worked great and, uh, the sledding, it was, uh, why we didn't have more rescue calls, I don't know. Every kid went in every direction when they were going down the hill, but it was a lot of fun to see, I would hope, in, in all honesty, with, uh, the winter usage. It is really a cool place for, uh, snow shoeing and for cross-country skiing as well when we do get, uh, uh, some snowpack. Uh, the, um, Parks Crew was ready to go and do some tracks over there as well, uh, for cross-country skiing, but we never, we never got out to grooming this winter, which is kinda too bad, but.
Pete reported, um, to Rec Advisory that there were people at the Winter Fest who had never, ever set foot on the golf course.
Yeah. It's a pretty special place. We get a lot of dog walkers down there in the wintertime, lots. So that and, uh, Pro Shop, uh, those, those will balance each other off and, uh, basically they will break even once again. I think this is four out of the last five years we have made money, so I think we're, we've got a great, uh, group down there. I think, uh, Nick has done an outstanding job and, um, I think he continues to bring energy to the job. He's a family man now with three little ones, so we're excited, uh, we're excited he has children. He's got responsibilities and hopefully we can keep him for a long time. Just, he's done a great job and we're very proud of him and very proud of the job he's done at, uh, Valhalla. So I don't see, uh, I don't see really any changes there, um, that, uh, won't be covered by revenues.
Out of curiosity, do we use any electric equipment over there?
All the golf carts are electric.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the work carts are electric. Uh, we do have, uh, we have, is that mower at Parks or is it the electric mower at Parks?
Yes.
Uh, the Parks Department uses the, the large electric mower that got bought last year with a grant. What, what do you think of it so far, Chris? Have they, you got any feedback on the mower itself?
They like it.
Quiet.
Quiet, it's very quiet compared to the rest of the mowers, but they've had no issues with it and it works just as good as all the rest of it. And they haven't had any issues with charging it or anything.
It's exciting to know since we've got a lot of mowers between the Parks Department and, uh, the golf course that it definitely will be an option in the future, especially if we can get grants like we did this last time.
That was through the LCC, right?
That was.
I've always heard that those blowers are very bad for the environment. Backpack gas blowers, they're awful.
That for your back, if you ever had to.
Change to electric.
I mean, the electric ones are, yeah.
What?
I've got a gas and an electric and the electric one's not as powerful.
It isn't?
No.
Dismal.
Recreation is very similar, um, uh, to Valhalla. It, uh, had another banner year last year. As you know, coming out of COVID, we had some very bad years, um, primarily because of the way we collected and dispersed the revenues. Uh, that has been fixed. And now our revenues are deferred when they're collected at the end of one fiscal year and applied to the next fiscal year. Like when you sign up for summer camp, you usually sign up in the springtime, but we don't incur the expenses until the next fiscal year. That problem was fixed right after COVID because that was almost catastrophic to us. So we are in much better shape there. Uh, Pete has done an outstanding job bringing on new programs, uh, new energy. Our issue is honestly help. I just, we just can't hire enough people and, uh, the space, the school has been very generous, as has North Yarmouth with their space. Uh, we're excited to do, you know, sharing employees and those type of things with North Yarmouth, but it's really, it's really the camp help and the, uh, you know, the help during the year to staff the aftercare and those type of things. We could expand those programs if we could find the help and we just can't. And we actually, uh, last year, uh, gave the kids a bonus of like two hundred bucks if they could find and recruit somebody and it, basically that two hundred dollar bonus, I think we spent about two thousand dollars. It brought in almost forty thousand dollars in extra revenue, so. And it, the more important thing, it actually got kids in the camp that wanted to go to camp. Cause we always have waiting lists and it's, it's extremely frustrating when we, the only reason we have a waiting list is because we can't, we can't find the help to staff it, so. And we don't wanna basically go the other route where the kids are getting overloaded with kids. It's just not safe, so. We're not gonna, we, I don't know what the, I think it's ten to one or something like that, the council people recount.
We all got an email last week about somebody complaining about not being able to get into something, so.
Yeah.
It, it's not gonna change. It's not gonna change. I just, I don't know, I don't know where these kids are all working, but they're, we just, we are really struggling. Uh, the jobs that are typically high school and college-age kids are, are staying open. I, I just, I, I don't know what to tell you. I, we'll continue to recruit, we'll continue to ask and we'll try to do the best we can to expand, but we also have to be safe, so I'm just gonna say if we can't do it, we can't do it.
Uh, really quick, sorry, um, could you remind me how it works with the credit card fees?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. All the bad stuff, I could turn it off.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. The credit card fees are, um, from the swipe, swiping of the credit card for the registrations either online or in, um, in the office. The office, um, swiping, it has a lower fee than the online swiping and we absorb that fee as part of the registration cost. Did you have anything?
No, I, I feel like we talked about this last year.
Yeah.
Maybe like baking that into.
I brought, I brought it up.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it's part of the registration cost. It's baked in.
So when you register, you, you effectively pay that?
That fee.
That fee.
Okay.
It's in, it, the fee is included in your cost of that program.
Okay, okay, got it, okay. Okay.
We, we charge you convenience fees, cause you couldn't call it.
I think it's turkey or something.
You had to name it because legally it wasn't legal.
Got it, okay.
And we have looked into those fees and they are fairly competitive right now and we're looking at restructuring the contract.
Okay.
To also, right now, um, e-checks are much cheaper, um, so on our half, it would be cheaper for us to do that, so we are implementing that as well as an option of payments. Looking to bring those costs down, hopefully, but.
It's one of those things that I wonder what the future of that looks like. Just thinking in my head, like, in the sense that will it be one of those things that eventually goes away?
I don't think so. So what I've been in talks with them is, um, I've used, my previous employment, we use MyRec, which is another program. We use ActiveNet here, there's same, similar things. But what we talk, what I'm talking to ActiveNet about is maybe a subscription-based and not a fee-based. So we would be able to anticipate budgeting that each year and kind of lock it in.
Versus transaction.
Versus buy transaction, cause right now it's buy transaction and it's different rates, how it's processed. There's four different rates.
Yeah.
For just one thing, so, hope, kinda getting a better, easier way to budget it, looking at that as a subscription-based, so she's getting back to me about what that would look like, cause I was, we're obviously al- also gonna go compare that to years past of how much we've paid. If the subscription's fifty thousand and we've only paid forty, I would be like, no, we're all set, thank you. Yeah, so just easier budgeting as well.
So Active Living, as you remember, um, we applied some of the COVID money toward Active Living and we didn't, uh, basically pay for the reimbursement through this account, so this year we don't have that money, so fifty-five thousand dollars is being, uh, requested for, uh, senior reimbursements. Most likely, we should look at end-of-year transfers as well to basically supplement that account. Uh, my, my biggest fear this year is going to be the hole left by the state of Maine with the, uh, senior tax reimbursements. Our community received over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in senior tax reimbursements last year. Um, we're, we will be made whole with this upcoming state budget, so our money will all be reimbursed to us. But the state is one and done. They did one year of that program and now the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars is gonna have to be paid back to the town next year.
Right.
Through the seven hundred residents.
Didn't we call it?
Uh, I, we absolutely did, Mike. We absolutely did. It's gonna be done in one year. Because you cannot sustain something like that and it's totally unsustainable, but we're gonna be the bad guys. You know, the tax bills are gonna come out and we're the bad guys. And that's why this is also critical. My opening comments about trying to reduce, reduce our number quite a bit so that that twenty-five percent who's already going to absorb five percent from last year doesn't get another five percent on top of that. It's, it's gonna be a big hit for some folks and I don't think people are fully aware of that yet. I don't real, I don't think people realize that, uh, the state's reimbursement of that last year, because it came through the town as we reduced their tax bill, is gonna show up next year, cause it's not, so. That was a one and done and, um, unfortunately, um, we'll, we'll have to endure the wrath of a lot of people next year. And that, that's over. And that, that's over 700 residents that got that reimbursement. And I don't begrudge them for it. I would have taken it too. If I was 70 years old, I would have done it. So all of us, so. Parks Department, really, really only minor adjustments in this budget, really to reflect past, past costs every year. It's a small increase of about 5.7%. Library is an interesting one. Remember 38% of library and recreation costs are paid for by North Yarmouth. Their, their programming essentially coming out of COVID has been more, probably stronger than anything else we do. They offer a lot of programs. They have a lot more things going on there. And some of the staffing that we've had to add is primarily part-time staffing, but we've just had to add folks. So we'll get more into that budget perhaps next time, but for me, I, I think it's a good investment. It truly has become, you know, our, our, our cultural center for the community and I think it always has been and I think will always be and kind of in that category. It's very exciting of things that are going on there. As you know, Thomas is going to retire probably sometime this summer. So we're, we're looking for most likely Stacy to kind of take over the reins. She's done a phenomenal job as the Assistant Director and we've given her more and more responsibilities. When she was hired, she was hired primarily because of her leadership abilities and her, her previous leadership stints in different libraries and she has not disappointed. I, I really think we have a diamond in the rough there and I think we'll be looking for, you know, kind of a Deputy Director versus a new Library Director because I think, I think Stacy will do a great job for you. Obviously, once you have a new manager on board, what I'm trying to do with any of these positions is to allow that person to be involved with the hiring and let that person pick their team. Because I don't believe, you know, that I should be selecting them. I'm trying to push that as late as I can so the new person could be involved with that. And we could set up, you know, the advertisements and get all the resumes and all that stuff ready and get it called down. And Angela will be working with us on that. So more to come in the future, but.
Bill, other than you, who are we losing? Thomas?
Thomas and Carla. Yeah, and Chris. We go as a package, so sorry. Now, we're, we're just, and, and this has been planned for a while, so this, this is no surprise. Carla was going to leave in December and I asked her if she would stay, you know, until the end of the year and she agreed. So, you know, probably somewhere between May and July she'll transition out. And hopefully, you know, we'll start, you know, doing the interviews sometime, I hope in May. And that, whoever you select will be involved with those interviews. No real change in Historical Society. We did, we do still have some minor maintenance in the building to do. We also have had two incidents where we've had small amount of water in the basement, which is absolutely shocking to me. And Chris and I will be looking into that probably tomorrow. I would tell you why it's shocking is we got about a 15-inch pipe outside that building that carries that water directly away. And we put so much time and energy into the drainage there. We said we can't have any water. So I don't know if there's, might be just a, maybe a slight plug in the drainage, in the corner of the drainage somewhere. But we'll be, we'll be on site tomorrow to see what we can see and see where it comes from.
Do we have a fox den in there?
We have, we have drains inside and out of that, that floor and I'm just, I would, I can't imagine where it would be. I really can't. It really surprises me, so.
Drain isn't picking up all the water?
Well, if you recall when we had it open for that winter, we had four feet of water in it. And we said there is no way we're going to get this done with a sump pump and a foundation drain. So then we put a positive gravity drain all the way around it. So we got to, one, check to see if the outlet has any plugging or the catch basin outside or, or, and then we're going to have to figure out a way to get a camera up the system because that, that can't occur. We got too many valuables downstairs and that's, that's why we took such time and, and efforts into.
Do we have any in the library basement?
Libraries always have issues, has always had issues in there. And, but when we put the drainage in for the Historical Society, I mean, we ran, ran that pipe, gosh, 300 feet and it's like a 15-inch pipe. There's no way unless there's, who knows? We'll figure it out. But it could be where the roof is coming down on the drip edge, you know, there are a host of things we could, we could work through. But we did get a lot of, a lot of rain in a very short period of time, but still didn't make a lot of sense. General assistance, the real change there has been the.
Sorry, really quick question, Bill. Internet at the, just more of a knowledge question. Why does it feel like the internet is almost the same cost at Historical Society as it is at the library? And the library is a larger building with probably more use.
I think that just might be our Time Warner subscription from the street into the building. And once we get it into the building, how we disperse it is really hard on us. I know when we did the Historical Society, we put, I think, six or eight different heads in that building to get a better signal because it was, they were really having a hard time, but. Monthly.
It's the telephone as well.
Oh, the voice-over IP in there?
Got it. That makes sense.
But they're, you know, I think it's, but they both have similar services. I don't think there's anything special with either one of them. Again, general assistance, that pretty much reflects our changeover to the county for services. They have really done an outstanding job for us and I'm pleased to report, Bob, that you shared that with your finance group. Anyone that's using that service is very pleased. They do, they do a great job. Most of our, one of the nice things about having the food pantry downstairs is we probably save about $40,000 in food costs because they work directly with us. They give them the application for the food pantry and they're up and running within days instead of weeks. So it works very well. Really no change to health services. This right now is Anita Anderson. She's a Health Inspector for the state. She's retired, I should say. She replaced Eileen Wyatt when Eileen retired. She and Eileen worked closely together in that transition. Anita's been great. Really, she reports out on issues related to potential things like the equine mosquito virus.
Cycphylitis.
Cycphylitis and other things. She's been very helpful in anything we've needed her. If we ever got into a situation where we had to try to get somebody out of their home, or she and the code officer in the past, some of the councils, you'll remember, we had to have both of them go into the home, meet with the person and try to find a better situ, living situation if it gets to be, usually it's a mental wellness issue as well as a safety issue. And together, Anita and Bill have worked very closely in the past. That's a real hard thing to do and we've only been successful once. In that situation, we were able to basically demolish the house, sell it and give the proceeds after tax, after taxes were due to that owner to live out the rest of it alive in a facility. I think it was in Westbrook at the time. So we've had very good, very good partnership with Anita and Bill and we'll continue to do that. So it's really just there as a placeholder so you know where the money is going for her services. Cemetery Association, I think this is the third or fourth year of 5% increase. We're trying to catch up with their increase in operating costs through the cemeteries. Bob Story was here just a few meetings ago, just to give you an update. They've done an outstanding job with our cemeteries and I would encourage you to keep using them as long as they're available. Because it's, it's, it's an expensive undertaking to maintain the cemeteries we have and they do a fantastic job as well as documenting the graves and the software system that he continually updates. So pretty proud of what we've done and accomplished in those cemeteries.
And he said he probably had the fewest number of lots sold last year. So, you know, it's the best property investment in Cumberland is to buy your cemetery lot.
There we go. Secret Santa. I hear it coming. Oh, man. You guys are all bad.
Stocking stuffers.
Stocking stuffers. Yeah, my retirement gift.
A hundred percent. We need to do that. That's great.
Yes, I'd like to be in the West Wing.
There's no taxes.
Oh, okay. Thank you, guys. Conservation is the monies that you allocate to the Lands and Conservation Commission as well as the Land Trust, should be Cumberland Land Trust. Both are very different. Both do very different things. Penny Asherman is the Executive Director now of the Land Trust. They're doing some very exciting things in town still. You've heard their presentation about the Watson Woods up at the end of Turkey Lane, which will be a very exciting addition to the Rhine's Forest and the Godso Woods on the other end. So very exciting to see those properties connections and preservations and they continue to do very good things. Lands and Conservation Service as well. I mean, they're here before you almost every meeting with another project. The latest, I think, was the Tree City USA and that, that'll be exciting to see how that goes forward. You got some very, very talented people on that group and exciting to see that continue.
If funds aren't used on that, do they roll over?
They do. We have established a reserve fund for that so that it doesn't, we don't get into the use it or lose it category because in some years they have projected the next year they'll be doing a bigger project and they'll have a pool of money to draw from.
Okay.
So last year, I think they did some cutting in the Rhine's Far, in the Rhine's Forest, right? Yeah. Which, which was used through their funds.
I was just curious, and this might be for Chris. So when we're looking at the invasive spraying on the town-owned properties, like the works that, like the work that Public Works does in kind of the, the buying of the chemicals, is that your budget? Or is that come out of their budget? Or is it, it's our? It's conservation.
Yeah, they buy the chemicals, but we provide the labor.
You provide the labor, okay. And then the, do you bill them back for the labor or no? Okay. And then if we were to use, or if they were to elect to use the outside vendor to come and spray, that would come out of their budget, not our budget. Okay. And Town Forester is their budget? Okay, thank you.
And no anticipated costs for the orchard this year?
That's all part of, some of the rollover from last year, they didn't use very much money last year.
I have that budget breakdown for you by, from Mike Swin. Yeah, I can show you later. They're doing a lot of grant, grant work to get donations and grafting and getting people to donate the trees, plants.
It's amazing.
They're doing a great job.
Debt service, slight decrease. When you get a chance to look in your book, I'm not sure if I've updated your chart yet, but this was the year they were, the lines were going to intersect. We did a, we remember we had a butt, debt service reserve account that we put money into to kind of take that curse off the debt service. It spiked a few years and we were able to do some end-of-year transfers to kind of keep it fairly flat. This was the year that the lines intersected and that's why there was a slight decrease. The insurance budget, this is again, not, not a fun budget to look at for me. Primarily because there's not a lot of control we have on a lot of this stuff. We are working, again, like I said earlier, with our workers' comp providers to try to reduce that some and if we can, we shall. But Katie and I met, we felt we had a really good meeting. I, I think there is an ability to maybe knock that down 30,000 or 40,000, but we're going to have to be more aggressive with internal safety committees, internal investigations for accidents that happen. A lot of things that we're, we don't have a lot of accidents, but when we do, they've been pretty serious. So we've got to, we've got to be pretty, pretty much more vigilant with that safety committee and I think that will help. Some of the things we're just not going to be able to change, the number of employees, the size of our organization and some of the things they're charging us for. And I'll get into that a little bit more at our next meeting. But really, that's, that's a pretty, pretty big increase and we'll, we'll get into more detail, I think, the next time unless you have a question I can put down and I'll come back to you with it.
Just out of curiosity, the, on this page, the health insurance line, is this just the residual fund? Like the residual balance owed or, because there's line items for health insurance on?
In every budget, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that's just the residual?
I think so. It's kind of that, you know, overflow that we do have from year to year and we really, it's a small amount. If, if it were to go away, I don't think it would be the worst thing in the world.
Okay. The wellness thing?
You can, since you're, oh, I'm sorry. That's a really good point.
Yeah. Um, so, bad Katie. So in 2026, Maine has implemented sick leave for employees. However, we need to collect that starting January 2025. So it's 1% of salary employees, of all employees, 1%. 0.5% on the employee, 0.5% on the employer. So what you see reflected here, since it's going to be at FY26 expense, is in here, it's, there's a holding spot for that to be transferred for next year for that cost of that program.
That was a significant number on the county budget.
Yeah. So the HR reserve amount is 25%, and 25,000 and 25,000 is also put away for this 0.5% that the employer, the town of Cumberland would incur for the FY26 year. Yeah, I calculated it out, yeah.
What is the wellness increase?
Oh, that, that's unfortunately the amount of things that we have to do on an annual basis for employee fit-for-duty testing, especially with the fire department. For those who can wear respirators, even those that only work a few hours a year, if they wear a respirator, they have to be tested. Every year they have to be tested. We do, we test that, we test hearing, we test other things. And a lot of that is just mandated by the state and we don't have a lot of control over. It used to be all for the wellness of our employees and that's been a smaller portion of that versus the fit-for-duty that we have contracted both with now with police and with fire. So in, in the end, it's supposed to, supposedly will help us with our losses, but just keeps growing.
Is that something we outsource or is that something?
Yes, all outsourced. All outsourced.
It's like at that rate, you would wonder, go ahead.
No, I was thinking the same thing. Go ahead.
At that rate, you would wonder, like, is there a way to regionalize that and, because that's like a salary at that point?
Yeah, that, that would be an idea if we could get three or four towns together that would be willing to do that. And it's something we could explore because I think that's a great idea. I think the issue is just the specialty equipment that goes along with that as well. But it doesn't seem like it's, it should be that much.
I mean, when you're looking at $70,000, you know.
Can I ask what the large number for under insurance for wellness is for our actual, so twice? What we budgeted for? Says 85,300.
Right. We'll, we'll get you a breakdown of the detail of that.
It might be in the book?
I don't think so, but we can, we'll, we'll run that report so we can see all the specifics in there so we can give you everything.
Shirley, what was your question?
The detail underneath the 85,000, that's under the 24 actual.
3370.
Yeah, the very last one.
We budgeted 40 and so far today.
Double it. Oh, I got a quick answer.
Do tell.
That's where we're budgeting right now, all the HR work that culture, Range Culture has been doing. All the HR work that culture, Range Culture, has been doing for us, for the managers hire, for HR contracting with employees. A lot of that has come out of that. Next year, it'll come out of admin and TIF. So that's the bulk of it. That's why it's doubled.
Okay.
So we'll get you the details so you can see it.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Hydrants, that's the Portland Water District, and the fire protection that we have through all our town. It's a slight increase in their water fees, but really, it's about catching up to the number of hydrants. They typically lag behind us a little bit in charging, and they do catch up over time. You could see... Let's see, we're up to about $71,000. Well, we'll probably hit 92 this year. We hit 90,000 last year. Okay. So we do have some new subdivisions that are coming online with water, and that's as they add hydrants. Each hydrant is charged separately. I think we're up to, Chris, 250-ish, somewhere in that ballpark. Streetlights. I... This is a pay-as-you-go budget. This is paying for all our LED lights. We have typically added 10% to utilities regularly, and I think we have one more year. We'll get you a dollar figure of what we have left to pay off our LED light systems. It's either one or two more years left in this. And what we elected to do, if you remember, was to kind of deficit fund it so that we would pay it out of our street lighting budget annually as we went. And we'll be paying ourselves back each year. I think next year or the year after will be the last payment.
Does the state do anything for that?
For us?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got money. We get $7,000 or something like that.
Is that annual or one time?
One time. One time through Efficiency Maine. We were able to get money. Our contractor applied, and we were successful. That was applied the very first year we put them in.
So 23 or 22?
No, I think 22.
We looked to replace our streetlights 10, 15 years ago in Central Main Power Water, no part of it. Anyways, it was a long haul to get where we are. Some sort of a personal success.
CMP was much better with service. I would tell you that for a fact. It is brutally difficult to get things done as quickly as CMP did it. I mean, it used to take a week, maybe two at the most, and we're on like a month or two at the most now. So the service level hasn't been the same, but I think everybody's just trying to figure out what the new normal's going to look like because... What is that name? On Target, is there a contractor that does the work? And it's... They're an arm of CMP, so... I don't know if it's retaliation because we left them, but it's not... It's been really difficult. We're in good shape. Our electricity usage is way down. And I think we have better lights as well. Miscellaneous is just kind of a contingency expense. This is our contingency fund. It's been budgeted at 10,000 for a while. Last year, this year, we spent about 5,500. And last year, we spent about 2,500. It kind of... And I couldn't tell you what that was, but I will find out and let you know at our next meeting.
Is this something that rolls over?
Something...
Like, does this roll over if you don't use it?
No. If it goes right back to general fund if it's not used. Municipal budget is up about 15%. A lot of that has to do with where we are with full-time wages. Again, we have now... Oh, I'm sorry. Two employees instead of one employee under this budget. Don't know how long that will last. We probably have another year of kitchens to do. Tom Burgess is primarily responsible for the day-to-day operations of the buildings as well as checking in at senior housing. Dean Perry is our resident carpenter, and he's done a really good job on the kitchen conversions. Some of the work we had done at Valhalla, Dean did put up the wall and the door that you see when you walk in there to hide all the tables and chairs, and finished off the kitchen, and has done a ton of work. So we're getting a lot of value out of that position. But if we do run out of projects in the future, I think it won't be this year, but you know, maybe a couple of years down the road, you might have to look and see if it's still worth it and if he still wants to do it. So he's a retired guy, and he doesn't really want to work full-time, so it's worked out very well for both of us.
Bill, can you talk a little bit about the telephone expense there? Just going up 22%? Looks like we had budgeted last year about 11 grand. I guess we're going up to 12. But is there... Or going up to 13? Just wondering why the jump. That's what, Chris?
It's the Voice Over IP. We had to replace all the phones.
Okay.
And that's mostly Town Hall, right? That phone system right there, that's primarily for Town Hall?
It's about 26,000. Two years ago.
Yeah, we had a different vendor several years ago when we first went to Voice Over IP, and they were a system that really was not very good on service, and we had to change pretty quickly. So... But our cost is about half of what it was years ago. But I don't know why the increase year over year. We'll get you that information.
Okay.
Do we pay for town staff's cell phones, out of curiosity?
We reimburse employees up to $75 if they're required to have a cellphone.
Okay.
But these two guys are required because they're on call also on the weekends.
Yeah.
So...
Just curious.
Abatements, it's kind of a weird one if you look at it. Why is there 302,500? Well, there's your senior tax rebate. That's where it came out of last year. We had to figure out where to budget for it because the state really wasn't giving us a lot of direction. So the assessor, John Brushwine, and most of the assessors decided to basically look at that as an abatement of taxes, which it technically was. So that's why we budgeted it there, and we would basically replace it with reimbursement. I don't think we're gonna get the full 302,505 before the end of the fiscal year, so that will leave a little bit of a hole there. But that'll get paid off again in miscellaneous revenue in the future. So... And the SAD budget is... It's actually 7.8, I believe. So that is a placeholder for now. We're hopeful that that can be adjusted as they go forward. They, too, are in contract negotiations this year, so we may not get a number, a real number, for a while. It may be closer toward May or June, and we may just have to go with the best number we have forward. We typically won't commit taxes until July anyway, so there's still plenty of time to come back and revise the budget. So you may have to come back and revise your budget vote if we decide to close it out and say, "We'll come back and adjust the amount we have to pay for expenses." But we'll know more in a month or so. So this is just a placeholder for now. And then the next meeting, if we have time, we hope... County taxes, I did talk about briefly. They've gone up, if I can find them there. They went up 8.5%. That is inclusive of your rebate. If you remember, the county changed to a fiscal year, and when they did that, we owed half a million dollars more. And they allowed us to basically finance it over five years. So it's not quite a... It's not quite a half a million, but it comes out to close enough. And 1.291 is that increase. Most of that increase is in the increase in valuation for the town year over year. This time around, a lot of the projects that were not in TIF districts were being valued at full value, like Christmas Creek, for example. I think the year before, they... Because they lagged behind a year on taxation with us. And then the last line item is capital reserves. The great majority of that is funded through TIF. That's the TIF transfer you see on this bottom line right here, about 1.4 million dollars. So we can keep the 591,500 flat. And that's... That's the speed budget. So we have some more information to get back to you. We'll clean up some of the other things that came through here. But we still have some work to do. You know, we really do. And I will, and Katie and Chris will work with us to help. Cindy has been very helpful in guiding Chris and I, especially through Munis. So we're hopeful that, you know, we can come to you with a better outlook. I think just briefly on revenues, so I can give you a five-minute break before you get to the next thing. We did okay. We went through and realistically looked at our revenues, and we came up with just under a half a million dollars in additional revenues that we were able to find. Some of that came from recreation in Valhalla, the increases in revenues they saw. Some of it was found in building permits, tightening that up, tightening up the impact fees, tightening up things that in the past, we kind of under-budgeted what we thought, just as a buffer. The big hit for us was really the state revenue sharing, which I've still got to get to the bottom of. 200,000 is a big hit.
Is there any sense in Augusta with the additional forecast and revenues that they might share some of that with us?
Well, that's why I was so shocked. When I opened the forum, I go, "Whoa, wait a minute. Is this Cumberland, Rhode Island, or what is this?" You know, I was really shocked that we went down. I've never seen any town go down 10%.
Especially with so much in their coffers, as they claim.
It didn't... It did... So we're... I'm not positive that that's... There's not something funky with that number. And if we can find out what that is or the reason why, I'd like to know the reason why, if that really stands. So that was a big hit. So that was very unexpected. Excise tax are just insane in this community and are still going through the roof. I mean, we were, I think, a half a million dollars under-forecasted last year, and so we bounced that up as well. So you're doing very well on your revenue, your non-property tax revenues here. I think the big hits were, one, revenue sharing. We cut what, another 100, 150,000 out-of-bag revenues because of, you know, ending... Potentially ending trash bags the end of this year. But that's a conversation you're going to have to have. There are towns who still impose trash bag fees. We'll call it the honor system because Cosella isn't checking... You know, when they grab the arm, they're picking that container up. They don't see what's inside it, and they flip it over the top, and the operator doesn't see if it's got a green bag, a purple bag, an orange bag, or no bag. You know, it's just...
What's the start date?
Probably spring of '25, Mike. So I would say March, April-ish of next year, so a year from now. That's what we're looking for. We really don't want to go out in the wintertime, get people educated. We'll have to really ramp up the education program by fall just to get people aware that it's coming and remind them. And we're... You know, the one thing we've got to think about is, you know, what are we gonna do with all the trash cans? Because you're not gonna be able to use your trash cans. You're gonna have to use the cans they provide, and they'll be delivering two cans to every resident in the community, one for trash, one for recycling. And they're 65-gallon in size, so most of us have 32-gallon trash cans now, so 65 sounds like it's big. But some people are gonna want another one, and you know, how do we deal with that? So that'll be an item in April that we'll be talking about in detail. A lot of trash talk that night, so with your A-game.
Why... Question. I would have to see what the margins are, but why not adjust the pricing of trash bags to be more comparable to what the consumer would be paying for a trash bag so we're still generating some form of revenue and not taking such a loss?
And how would you do that?
So like, for example, say the... Say a bag... I'd have to understand what we're paying for production, right? But if the cost of a bag of trash bag... An average cost of a trash bag box is $10, say, and we're charging 15, it's like, can we bring, close the margin... Like, the revenue margins tighter and still make some form of a revenue? You know what I mean? So people are still... Because people aren't gonna buy them because they're more expensive. So if we're giving them an option that's like the same market rate as something else, but still making a margin off of it, we're losing revenue, but still not losing all of the revenue. See what I'm saying there?
I do. I think...
But I don't know what the cost is.
Instead of buying hefty trash bags, you're buying Cumberland trash bags.
Yes.
Yeah. And our bags are probably a thicker mill than any town around us because we had people just complaining about the thickness all the time. So we kept increasing it, increasing it. Our bags are what, 40 cents, 50 cents a piece now?
Yeah, it's all broken down in the budget book.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious if that would be...
Yeah.
Because if we still take a profit, you know, say, we're changing from $4 to $2, we're still getting 50% of the profit that we could... You know what I mean? Like, we're not losing everything.
So we have to pay for the bags in advance. So we have a bag producer that charges us, I don't know, 42 cents a bag or whatever it is. And then we're charging 250 for that same bag. Who would buy our bags?
I know. That's what I'm saying. We gotta get closer to the market rate.
Yeah, but we would...
Like, if you're going to Hennepin, you're probably buying all your groceries and your trash bags at the same time, like, versus... You know what I...